All right, I'll back to order. Uh, can I fill you?
Are we doing beep with you?
Are we doing the re- ... There's a couple people that want to clear up some items they think are ... Thank you. Pull the microphone where you sit. Say your name again.
Sheriff, carefully.
Say your name again.
It's Milo from Gilce. I think sheriff is on warpath and I think that can have some limitations which are not necessarily realistically. I think for instance, the action, the planned action against commercial, so-called commercial growths in this case, are reaching down to the levels where there is no such thing happening as commercial growth. Every medical use, medical marijuana use has its commercial components. Every shovel you buy would be used as an example of commercial enterprise. There has to be some sort of a clarity brought into these matters and we don't have a war on our hands. I don't believe that. We may need some police action against the actual danger, but we don't need to overemphasize dangers we don't really exist. You know, the same goes, there is a pot of gold at the end of every rainbow. Well, in Lake County it just happens to be at the end of the rainbow is pot. You know, that's a temporary issue, that's a temporary thing. What we have to really is to revitalize the whole life here. We have to, we have a number of opportunities to do that. And if the Board of Supervisors or any other agencies would investigate and expand into those areas, we wouldn't have this isolated problem with marijuana because there are ways of making money without it. We have tons and tons of pears which appear on the grounds every single season which go unused. We have the lake, of course, which for some reason the Board of Supervisors would invest $300,000 to run the three water lawnmowers. I wonder why they didn't buy one instead of spending their ... I mean, I could go on and on and on. People have to be given a space to come up with their own ideas and put them into practice. You know, this all, the governmental activities are always only based on money. It limits the people's ideas, it limits their thinking. You have a state of, I mean, the state park that charges $30 for a piece of ground for a person to sleep on. What we cannot do that, we really have to allow people to start growing all sorts of things, all sorts of things. We have to, the government of this county can facilitate that thing. People can be asked to grow, let's say, tomato plants along with their marijuana plants. Each marijuana plant can be required to have two tomato plants grown with it, just as an experiment maybe. We have, someone mentioned aquaculture. That's not, the aquaculture is not necessarily related to marijuana growth. There are all sorts of things, you know, people produce their own food with and they should. And, but we are so compartmentalized and so, you know, so constant struggle of some sort that, you know, we don't have the energy and left to imagine what can be done. And that could, you know, I wish there would be a point at which, you know, there would be, let's say, a website for people for their input going every week. And the government require, request people's input, you know, maybe even poll on certain issues, which could be done easily through technology. There could be a board outside of the building here where people could put any kind of input that they would want to, which would sit there for two weeks and then it would be taken down. So people would be heard, so you wouldn't have these clashes here all the time. And there is more I would say, but, you know, I don't pull it out forever.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Like I said, Mr. Rivera, I value a lot of his activities, but I think, you know, he's on warpath, don't be silly. And I hear emotions in his, in his voice, which is appropriate, but at the same time, we are, we eat, and we behave, so perhaps he's oversensitive. You know, he also himself says that, you know, he was against the war on drugs. Well, he already covered that. We have 40 years of it and no results, negative result. We are, we are society addicted to drugs. People can't live without some pill and that's just not acceptable. We have Mount Kanakai, we have the lake to swim in. There are reasons why people take drugs and those have to be addressed by individuals mainly and then of course the government can follow up on it. Again.
Thank you, sir.
I'm vocal again, I just have one further comment. From all the people you've heard here, there are obviously many, many, many problems with this law. It is not, it cannot be enacted. There are too many legal problems, just too many social issues. Don't pass this law. Figure out a way to discuss it more. Don't be stupid and pass this law. And the sheriff told you not to worry about lawsuits. I totally disagree with that. This law, this law will bring you so many lawsuits, you'll be swamped. That is not a responsible government. So don't, don't pass something that you know you're going to get sued over. Figure out how to do it right. Thank you very much.
Just a couple really quick comments here.
Say your name.
Ron Green. This last gentleman's comment about the sheriff saying, "Don't worry about lawsuits." Well, he's brought a lot of lawsuits upon this county by his actions, so I wouldn't listen to that. And I would just like to say, this is a little off topic, but the sheriff got way off topic when he was up here and I just want to respond to one thing. What the sheriff's department is doing now is outrageous. They are profiling people in cars, they're stopping people randomly without reasonable suspicion on the highways, which is supposed to be the highway patrol's jurisdiction, and that's blatantly illegal. It's unconstitutional, it violates the Fourth Amendment. You need a reasonable suspicion or probable cause to stop a car. They're just stopping people randomly and then looking for an excuse as to why they stopped them. In fact, you mentioned the gentleman behind me here that complained that he was stopped twice recently and now he says it was for the light, but the officer that stopped him never gave him a reason why he stopped him. He just said, "Do you have any marijuana?" I mean, this is crazy. This is feeding into a frenzy in this county. This is nuts and this ordinance would just make it worse. And again, consider the little person that can't afford to buy his marijuana somewhere. He can't afford to move it indoors. Besides moving indoors, it's just terrible. Please consider the little person that this is going to, this is going to affect, this is going to prevent 95 or 98 percent of the people that grow their own medicine now, they won't be able to grow it in this ordinance because most of them in the areas where they don't have an acre or they're in town and they're not going to be able to grow it. It's just, so please consider the little person, the person that doesn't have the money to buy 100 acres. And also consider the people on property like rural residential that have 10 acres or 20 acres or 40 acres and they want a small collective. You can have small collectives in one area, larger collectives in another area. And do consider SEQUA. I mean, that's primarily, should be your first concern, is SEQUA being violated here. And that should be, you should be protecting the county. And you should protect the county by saying, "You've got to comply with SEQUA." And probably the sheriff's going to get up and now say something, but I just, I just felt that since he said that and misrepresented that, that I have to tell it like it is. What it is, is they are stopping people randomly now. If it happened to you, I don't think you'd like it, but that's off point. But he was off point, so I wanted to know the off point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I signed it before I stepped out of the room. My name is Richard Dattler. I've been up here for maybe 15 years now and I also have a home in Concord. And the medical marijuana, I've heard this whole, I waited to the end to hear everybody speak and I didn't hear so much on the medical part. I haven't seen one doctor stand up and talk about it. Everybody's got their opinion and that's why we're all here, law enforcement and lawyers, but everybody else just has their opinion and that's why I'm talking with my home here to tell you mine. I flew this area with Department of Justice a few months back. You guys have a very, very bad marijuana problem, which you are all aware of. It isn't trying to help the person who needs medicine, it's profit, okay? And there isn't one person in any part of this room that wants to see anybody suffer. If the medicine can help them, I want them to have it. I think everybody in this room wants to have it. It's about the crime that goes along with the plot. And I feel sorry for most of the people here that came today that have to smell it, okay? For one person's gain to override somebody's right for a peaceful, happy life and that smell overwhelming it is not right. If they can figure a way to do it without the smell, then they have to fight. But the fact that people are afraid to step up and say something, there is a problem. And the only other thing I can think of on that is if you're going to find them and you catch them with a bunch and they're breaking the law, don't leave them a couple. Take it all so they, if they decide to do it next time, they do it right, whatever you guys pass. And I want to thank the board for listening to everybody and you too. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Do we need to stop twice, if we're still on twice? Andrew Simmons, I spoke earlier about the cannabis and cancer.
We've been able to get into the communities to deal with the public safety and environmental damage occurring. It's not dealing with the cumulative impact of the problem that we're having with marijuana because the regulations are too liberal in that regard. So if you look at that long list of different county ordinances, they are limiting cultivation throughout the state. Most cities in the state have outright banned outdoor cultivation. Even Lakeport adopted an ordinance that they will implement next year that bans outdoor. We're a county of a bunch of small rural hamlets. You know, we've got rural properties all over the place, but then we have these 11 concentrated town areas. You saw Lakeport develop a ban. Most of the cities have banned outdoor for the simple reason that that's where people live, that's where they raise their families, that's where the schools are and the public parks and the lots are small and you can't get away from those problems. The very reason that we have zoning codes that say you cannot have beehives in residential districts, you cannot raise a hog in your backyard, you cannot raise chickens or goats in your backyard on your little lot in town, is the same basic premise here. This is no different. We're saying that, look, if I can't have a beehive in my backyard even though that honey helps me, it makes me feel better, it helps with the element I have with my allergies, I can't have that in marijuana. So what we're, you know, in that respect, we're being similar in how we regulate land use at the local level and that ultimately that responsibility resides on the Board of Supervisors. But I think that the SEQUA arguments I've heard are very weak. This ordinance, because of its ability to be enforceable and deal with the environmental problems it has, provisions in there for setbacks, limitations on amount of chemicals and, you know, herbicides, pesticides, et cetera, and those setbacks from those water courses, that is one of the actions within it that helps us better protect our environment. The, I'm sorry, Commissioner Martin Steele, the impact on community growth challenges question.
Well, the question I have is, we, presumably, we have a number of grows in various areas that are might end, oh, I'm so sorry, and I don't know if this is working.
Yeah, if you go right into it.
It's just too far out.
I have to be careful because one time I almost threw a rock sky here, so.
No, my question had to do with the changes under this ordinance versus the interim ordinance. And we presumably have grows that are operating under the current ordinance and presumably doing as well. I'm presuming that's true. And so my question is, of those, how many go away as a result of the changes being made in this ordinance?
I don't have a good handle on that because all we know is there's thousands of grow sites throughout the county and this is picking up. And, you know, to try to evaluate that number or.
We don't have that kind of information.
The questions come up several times today about input from the community. The Board of Supervisors is the body who appoints committees. I did not, I do not have the authority to appoint a committee to analyze and help develop an ordinance. Ultimately, that direction comes from the Board of Supervisors. The, and also, we keep a list of agencies that we refer projects to and some of them are, you know, they're at the request of groups and agencies. I don't have a marijuana organization on our list, an organization that's past. Yes, I don't, I don't know, you know, we don't have contact information. It was my understanding that the Green Farmers Association had not been active and that was the active organization last go around. But I didn't have directions from the board to go to a committee and they have not afforded me.
I just wondered if you had a list of people that would be interested in this subject that you would contact the top of your order to do that, even if you didn't do it in a committee fashion. Because I don't remember now what the reasons were, but that committee was not continued. Not sure the circumstances of that. The issue is, did people get a chance, if it's in time, to come well informed to our meeting today?
It is posted online on Lake County News on the internet.
It's on the board's website as well.
It's on the board's website. So it has been posted electronically, which it's a fairly long PDF file, so I mean, it's something that, I think it's 23, 26 pages like that, something like that.
The question about urgency of the interim ordinance, that's a real challenge. You know, county staff has a lot of concerns about that. I'm not sure where to start with that. That ordinance will expire, I believe the exact date is July 3rd, give or take a day or two. But it's July 3rd. What we've learned from past experience is that when that interim ordinance was adopted, it was adopted after several, a number of folks had already started, you know, planting their marijuana gardens. And one of the court, you know, the court held, local court held that, you know, the ordinance is fine, but you can't, you know, you've got people who already spent money invested, so you can't change the order. On the extreme, but it can go into effect January 1st. So the interim ordinance, though adopted a year and a half, but no plus, was only in effect this calendar year. And that, that is a real issue because the goal is to try to develop an ordinance that is workable, that is enforceable and is adopted by the board before the next cultivation season starts. Or else we're in the same issue as we were on the interim ordinance, the same issue that Lakeport had this year. They adopted their one several months ago, but decided now we don't, we know not to implement it until next grow season. And the fear that all the law enforcement staff have and my staff is that if, if that happens to us again on permanent ordinance, we're left with an expiring interim ordinance in July and we're not sure that we have the abilities to adopt another interim ordinance. That's more of a legal matter, there may be a way to do that, but we won't. We run the possibility of having a rule that's on our hands and not having any regulations to enforce the criminal elements and the large scale of stuff that's going all over the county. And it could get tangled up pretty quickly. So we, we're doing our best to get this through a process and preferably be adopted and, you know, so that everybody knows by January what the law of the land is going to face.
I have a couple questions.
Okay.
Can you sort of reiterate, and we talked a lot about the illegal commercial grows and how that's sort of caught up in this. Can you speak directly to how this new ordinance and the restrictions that are being imposed will combat that and why that will work?
Yes, but the, to answer that, I need to explain the differences between the enforcement processes. The current interim ordinance with all of this, you know, 48 plants or 36, there were six in town, has a 30-day abatement process tied to it. That is attached to the county's nuisance abatement ordinance. That's Chapter 13 of the Lake County Code. And in that ordinance, nuisance ordinance, it has this requirement that you post a notice of nuisance in order to abate and that property owner has 30 days to abate their nuisance or if they don't believe it's a nuisance, they can request a hearing in front of the Board of Supervisors. They're given 21 days to decide if they want to file that hearing request. And then if they do file the hearing request, we go through another two to three week process to notify them of the board's hearing date, have the hearing. So we're looking at anywhere from 30 to 45, 50 days to abate a nuisance depending on the circumstances.
So if I have 100 plants in my yard in downtown Lakeport, it can take that long under the current ordinance?
Under the current ordinance. Unless, unless the task force in their evaluation of the situation determines that there are state or federal violations on that property. But in terms of enforcing our local ordinance, that's been a huge problem just with how that interim ordinance had to come about. It was a stopgap measure, it had to be done quickly. The only thing we had was the nuisance abatement provisions in Chapter 13. This ordinance, this draft ordinance in front of you today, has its own abatement processes in there and they're expedited. And we lifted those from a few other jurisdictions that have done that. It needs to be expedited if you're to have the capacity to get to these more difficult sites. There's also an issue of grave concern to me and that's the safety.
What did you say? It needs to be, in order to get to.
It needs to be a quicker abatement process to get to these egregious sites. So right now, as an example.
Excuse me, because of the impact to neighbors or the plants?
Well, either environmental or whatever the issue is. But one example would be somebody plants too close to the lake shore or they've got, you know, they're diverting water from a stream. If we can't get Fish and Game out because they're too busy, and Fish and Game will get them on a water diversion and Fish and Game will eradicate the plants under their regulations. But if they're not available to do that, we can't get to that site in the situations of this, then we can't deal with it under our interim ordinance for 30 to 45 days. And also, the other problem is made real difficult is I don't want my department to be out there unarmed or have to call the sheriff's department to have a standby in order to post a notice of nuisance in order to abate. Nor does the sheriff's office have the staffing or the time to go through the Chapter 13 nuisance abatement process and go out, have their deputies post aside, keep the records, deal with an appeal and come back in 30 or 45 days. It's just not workable. Their resources are limited as well. So, I'm sorry, very long response here, but yes, this ordinance, this ordinance has teeth in it to turn those issues around, to, that is actually enforceable. It will improve the effectiveness of the law enforcement agencies dramatically, probably on an order of magnitude of three or four times what it is now with the current staff level.
As far as, we were talking a bit about, you know, some illegal grading such as taking place and it seems that if we're moving these, the larger grows, the communal grows, to the larger parcel, that would be mitigated somewhat. But is there a process that they would have to go through similar to winery before they can plant? They have to get some sort of an erosion control plan or, you know, preventing these plants to put straw down and things like that? Is there a similar regulation that will be imposed under this? I didn't see that in there right now.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Everybody is subject to the county grading ordinance, so, you know, that full separate ordinance deals with that. They come back to enforcement again. They probably have is, my guys can't go out, let alone are we going to get a contractor to go out after we've posted notice of nuisance order to abate and warn the owner that we're coming with a contractor to fix it if you don't in any of your property? Well, we can't do that when the plants are still there. And a whole bunch of these properties around the county where we have those violations, we can't fix the environmental damage while the plants are there. We have no authority to, in my department, to eradicate those plants. That's the sheriff's office. A contractor who in their right mind is going to go up there alone on that rural property to fix that 50-foot dam when all the plants are there or wherever the case is going to be. So we wind up having to wait all this time for the process, for the plants to be removed or for the bad guys that were in there doing that to go away so we can then go in. And one example of this was a site on Kanakai Road. Halfway up now Kanakai, these people went in, the plants were removed by the task force. A month later, plants were back, eradicated a second time. We went back trying to get our concrete done, all the noticing, trying to get the contractor and their guys were still out there. The same guys that were growing, a contractor, you know, rightfully is going to be skittish, you know? So it just delays the process and it has not been workable.
So shouldn't this ordinance then have some sort of an inspection process prior to grow that size in maybe three months, you know, plants or something, it's probably not as big an area. Although somebody did say it was like 200 square feet or something, which if you're in the right kind of R.R. property, especially in Lake County, you could have to do a lot of the grading for that. But on a larger parcel, is there some sort of permit process that we should be looking at then prior to this, just say, "Okay, that works, that looks like a good area and it will work there." Show, you know, we already have, they can't grow if they don't have water, they can't grow if there's not a residence on site. But is there something like that that should be, to protect, because, you know, the setbacks aren't very far from the creeks either.
Right.
I mean, the setbacks are pretty generous if you consider the setbacks in other counties nearby and to rivers and creeks. So, you know, to protect, part of this is to protect the environment. I want to make sure that we can really enforce it.
The idea with this type of zoning issue is that you set the bar, you set the parameters, but, you know, we, an example, we don't have line review for houses. We have all kinds of provisions for roof pitch, eaves, setbacks, minimum square footage width of house, but we don't go out at the site beforehand and say, "Yeah, that house will work there." So I don't want to, you know, we're cognizant, I don't want to treat marijuana sites differently than what we do in other issues, you know, in other areas. I don't want to create a new regulatory process if, I think, the ordinance just should be clear about where it's allowed and trust that people are going to follow those regulations. But if they don't, at least we have a fast track process to correct that in this ordinance.
Well, that's not exactly true. I mean, I understand what you're saying, maybe I was pushing a little too far with an onsite visit, but when I built the little home, I had to prepare a site plan and then I met with a planner and we looked at it on the GIS, make sure it was fitting in the law, make sure it wasn't in the flood zone, that it wasn't. it wasn't, you know, that it had the driveway access, and all these things were handled at the counter. And with our current GIS system for, on a twenty-acre parcel, you know, you can use Google Earth, consult it, and see the, the terrain and such. Just some sort of an oversight like that, so we have an idea of what we're doing. And it would be the same thing if a person came in to do anything, I would, in any kind of a grading or agricultural project.
I, I'm a supporter of the voluntary process for, for things like that, that we encourage folks to come in and check first before they do something. We, you know, we, we, this planners, my staff, you know, always prefers that when somebody comes in and runs something by them before they buy that property and do what they're going to do. And, you know, because sometimes we can say them a lot of heartache, and say, well, this won't quite work the way you're proposing it, but how about, you know, if you do this, or if you move it this way, or move that over here, it'll work, and here's this section of the code that we're referring to. If, if that was a requirement in the ordinance, I, I get what you're saying, I, I, and I understand the spirit behind it. But I think if it's, if it's a requirement of the ordinance, it's going to be very difficult for our department to, to deal with that. And, and part of it is, if they don't follow that requirement, what's the enforcement action? You know, they didn't, they didn't go through that process, but if they still plant in the right place, technically they might be violation of the code, but in practicality, they, they did it right. I, I-
Does he deny that?
It's, it's difficult, you know, it's, it would be kind of like having a design review process, or a pre-application review process. Those are volunteer, they're voluntary, we encourage them strongly.
Sorry, it just doesn't seem to-
I can't find answer.
Yeah, I just, I get concerned because one of the things we're supposed to do is protect our environment and such. I just wonder if it goes far enough in certain respects to do that. I think I'll wrap it with one more thing. So as far as the zone, the ag zoning, what is to prevent an owner of a property that's not currently zoned ag, but maybe in a general area, whether ag parcels, rezoning, whether to be to an ag to allow the use?
Quite a process. First off, the general plan, adopt the general plan for the county sets the guidelines for what's, what's considered agriculture, and it goes back to the type of soil, partly the slopes, but really the type of soil classification. So if we're talking the, the A district, the agricultural zoning district, it's not practical, folks should not expect to be able to rezone steep property that's not prime agricultural soil, containing prime agricultural soil to be rezoned. It's an expensive process, takes two hearings, one in front of your commission, one in front of the board of supervisors for final adoption, and it only goes into effect three days after the board of suits adopts the resolution. Also, in a lot of cases, they would be faced with, after the process, apply for a general plan map of them as well, just to align the general plan map with the proposed ag zone. We don't zone properties on the hillside ag because they don't contain soil, ag soils, excuse me. So, so it's, it's possible that people would apply. If they, if those applications were not practical, not consistent with the general plan, my staff and I would advise those individuals, here's the process, here's what it's cost. We don't think it can be supported for the following reasons. You have the right to apply, but that application fee is non-refundable, and you won't know for another six months, you know, going through the process whether the board will approve it.
I would just, one thing for the county council, heard a lot of discussion today about the sequoia aspect. Rick gave his version. Do you agree with his version of where we're at, or do you have some other versions that you want to add?
I'm happy to discuss that. I did a lot of research in what are the trends right now in this particular issue. And I'm not sure if you're aware, that in May of this year, there was a California Supreme Court decision which basically stated that the Compassionate Use Act did not divest counties and cities of their rights to do land use planning, basically, exactly what we're trying to do.
The river side decision.
Right, the river side, city of river side decision. One of the things that, now that there's not that issue to attach anymore, several lawsuits have been brought challenging the, the sequoia, sequoia declaration that is made in all of these ordinances. My research has, my indication is that it's not going to go anywhere, that this is a fairly benign issue, but it is still working its way through the courts. It's sort of all they have left to tackle now that we have a California Supreme Court decision. So I agree with Rick's assessment. That doesn't mean that there aren't a couple of county ordinances which have the same declaration, sequoia declarations in them as this one would, that organizations and pro-marijuana organizations have not brought a sequoia challenge to. As I said, I agree with Rick's analysis of it, however, there are those cases out there. They're going to, right as a moment.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
We have the marijuana growers, people here. How many plants can you grow in ten, ten square feet?
Indoors or outside?
Outside.
One or two, if you're a good grower?
Actually, the ordinance says a hundred square feet, a ten by ten area.
That's what I just said.
That's indoor though.
Two.
How do I get there?
I don't.
So it's one or two?
Yep.
Well, probably one to twelve, depending on the grower. Okay, well, I'd like to try earlier, have plants to dig.
And how, how much marijuana does it take for, each person is on a marijuana medical prescription for a year?
Depending on if it's for pain, if it's for cancer, if it's for appetite.
Just give me an average for-
Six plants.
The federal limit, or the federal guidelines is around six pounds. That's what federal patients receive every year, is three hundred joints per month, ten per day, which comes out to roughly six pounds per year.
And how many, how many pounds do you get off of a plant, Steve?
Depending on if you're a good grower, or beginner, two ounces to ten pounds. So really varies.
I got three ounces of mine.
And, and once again, just like any other harvest, it ripens all at once. So if you're going to have a year's supply, you're going to have more than eight ounces on hand. I mean, you, you're, you're stuck with it. You can't just keep growing it all year long because now we're not allowed to grow outdoor greenhouses. And frankly, a lot of people, there's not a whole bunch of us becoming millionaires. You can't afford to grow year round inside on lights. It's not the same quality, it's not, it's, it's just not the same. It's like, do you want to eat all indoor grown tomatoes? No, you get a choice when you go to the supermarket of getting organic tomatoes, celery, radishes, but you can't grow it in your backyard. You can't grow medicine in your backyard either. We need to grow for other people.
He just needed an answer to his question.
So I'm not real happy about the, uh, no more outdoor grows on anything, an acre and above. It could, now you're putting all the limit on the small lots to indoor. And that can be, like you said, you know, we're limiting it to twelve hundred lots. But what I'm worried about is all, all of a sudden, we have a problem now with marijuana people coming in renting all these houses. I think we're going to add to that. If you can't grow it outdoors, they're going to come in and rent every house they can find. And then trash them all. So maybe we might want to look at this and say, okay, for a lot under an acre, you can plant three plants in a ten by ten space. That's all.
Thank you.
I have a question. Nope. I have a, a general question about the ag zoning real quick.
Right on.
Well, this is, it's, I'm not, I'm not, my question is, you've got the ag, they're limiting it to ag. But when you look at the zoning, there's also ag preserve, ag is the base zoning district, and you're looking at ag preserve, and then there's ag industry. And they all defer to the ag zoning district, saying that all the uses allowed in ag are also allowed in those other districts. So they, plus whatever else is allowed in the ag, ag preserve and the ag industry's combining districts. So my question is, how, how are you determining the ag zone when those other two defer to that? That's, that's my question.
It's, it's the agricultural zoning district. It's mapped. It's on the sectional district map to the county. It's the A district.
It is not a bush?
It's not Ag APZ, it's not TPZ, it's not A.
Wherever it says A period one.
I understand that, but when you look at the zoning, the permitted zoning usages in ag preserve and in ag combining district, it states all the uses allowed in ag are also allowed in these. Each of those districts defers to them.
It has no relevance to the way this ordinance is, is currently drafted. This ordinance says Ag is a-
My concern is that you would have people that would, I'm, I'm-
It wouldn't apply.
Okay, but my concern is that you would have people that believe they're following this because their zoning district defers to ag, and then they would actually be in violation of the law. That's my concern.
I'm, I'm sure they'd find out rapidly.
Yeah, after they violated the law, yeah.
Rick, I, I, I am also pretty uncomfortable with this. I, I, I don't envy trying to find a path worse for everybody. It seems that most of the arguments on, on increasing restrictions are the result of people who aren't following current law. And, and throwing more laws at it, I, I realize enforcement's a bitch, but I don't know how you're going to, how you're going to make it easier to enforce with more laws.
Right. Thank you.
I'm sure glad it's your problem and not mine. In a little more detail, there was a gentleman who had a rental house in, in East Lucerne who found a grow inside. As, as I read this, because he owned the property, he'd be equally liable for any damages and penalties. The way the penalties were structured, it looked like, like the penalties increased for each infraction, but there was no indication that those infractions could be consecutive and you didn't have to have any notice. So in theory, that guy could incur thousands and thousands of dollars of liability by the time he found out that somebody destroyed it. So maybe I'm reading it wrong, because I didn't go to law school. The, um, one of the, one of the reasons to have a provision in there requiring the homeowner's motorized signature is, is partly to protect the, the property owner. If the homeowner didn't authorize that tenant to grow, and the tenant tore up the house and nobody knew about it until the task force went out because they, you know, drew tips or information they got, wrote the warrant, went and found it. In a situation like that, the county's not going to want to go after the property owner for damages, or going after the grower. Flip side of it is, if the property owner agreed to allow it, and, you know, grower has a, a written permission, you know, then I, I suppose the, the county through the DA, the sheriff's office, county council, you know, as that, you know, as they look at something, decide whether, you know, whether the county's going to go after, who they're going to go after for penalties civil or whatever, they're going to have to, to consider that. But when they're negotiating that with the property owner, the fact that they have that for leverage to hold over you changes the negotiating process. And it'd be wonderful if everything happened in a spirit of good faith, but you, you just can't always count on that. I, I, I think that requiring motorized authorization is, is double-edged because it is violation of federal law, and, and it has a chilling effect on a property owner. To have to put into writing something that, that could invite the feds to come in and, and look for some kind of forfeiture. I'm, I'm not sure whether, whether that's in the spirit of, of state law or, or fair to the citizens of county. The one, the one, and, and I don't know what the time constraints are, the one comment I heard that did make a lot of sense was, was from Mr. Murphy on, on the advantage of bringing more stakeholders in and finding a solution. I don't know, maybe that's just not possible, but good luck.
I'd like to readdress, I'd like to readdress your question about how much-
Public input is-
Over.
Done, sir. Thank you. Yeah, that's it. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I've been doing some research, and right now, the federal government's issued statements and memos, you know, saying that they're not going to come down on people in areas where they have strong regulations. States like Colorado, Washington State have jumped on that and are imposing strict regulations on the cultivation and distribution of medical marijuana and also recreational marijuana to prove, to show the federal government that they are actively regulating this currently illegal federal substance. And so, in a sense, that strictness, those harsh regulations basically protect the grower and the user because in states where that, that's what they're trying to do, is they don't want the federal government coming into their states and raiding their, you know, their distribution centers and, and hassling medical marijuana users and things like that. So to be responsible as a county, because California doesn't really have that type of regulation, they kind of just open the door, but to, to protect our citizens, users and non-users alike, we have to have some pretty solid regulation in place. If we don't have that regulation in place, we're basically not protecting you. Don't like.
Well, I keep thinking that there's probably room for tweaking this in, in several places, and I'm still wondering whether we can really finish that today. But the, the question I have is, I, I do think that part of the solution is in dispensaries, in some kind of dispensary ordinance. I think, I think it's a problem to have unregulated, you know, growth indoors or outdoors in residential areas where there are schools, where there are children growing up in these homes, where there are close neighbor proximity, you know, issues that are just going to come up. But by the same token, the spirit of the law is that people are able to access their medicine. And without dispensaries being part of that, you know, part of that equation, it just seems to me like we need to step on this. And my question then would be, what can we as a planning commission do to invoke a review of, of dispensary ordinance?
I'm happy you brought that up. I think your commission, if you so choose, can, when you make your recommendations to the board on this ordinance, that you add the caveat that you would like the board to reconsider the dispensary ordinance and come back and integrate a dispensary provision within this ordinance, or adopt a separate dispensary ordinance that works in unison with this ordinance. And I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that, I would be very much in favor of putting that into sort of the mix of whatever solution.
That can be a separate ordinance. There was an ordinance about it. The board rescinded it because of the referendum attempt on it.
The point is, we can make that-
Yeah, you can make that recommendation to the board and ask them to reconsider it.
So this whole discussion. My stand on this is that I agree that folks need to be able to get whatever medicine is available to them. I don't think they should be allowed to impact neighborhoods in order to have that medicine. I am in favor, like you say, of the collective idea of having that available to folks, to, to which they can purchase the medicine they need. Other than that, the ordinance it stands as presented is, it's not perfect. There's no ordinance that ever going to come in front of this board that's perfect. But- But I think that enough time and effort has gone into it to try to consider the aspects of the people out there that do not care about what they do to affect people with illnesses that are trying to get medicine. The people out there that are strictly growing to harvest, to sell on the open market, and it has nothing to do with medicine. So whatever it takes to get that under control, whatever it takes to stop people coming into other people's homes and acting violently and injuring people, putting people at risk, often times spreads out into the surrounding area, the surrounding residences. That needs to be addressed. That needs to, and I think it is addressed here. I think that it gives the sheriff's office the tools that needs to get into these places and stop the illegal growth, stop the illegal overabundance of product that we're seeing. I know in my heart, after 15 years in law enforcement, that the amount of cars that are being stopped on the highway and the amount of product that's being taken currently is probably less than 10% of what actually gets out of the county. The people that get caught are the dumb ones that drive without license plate lights or taillights or, you know, cars that are loaded down to where they're scraping their bumpers on the, you know. Those are the people that get caught. The smart ones aren't getting caught and they're getting away with millions and millions of dollars out of this county. And that needs to stop. It's a cash crop that just needs to... I go back to the old thing when the proposition went through. The state should have stepped right up and said, "We're going to regulate this. It is going to be a medicine, so it'll go through the same prescription and requirements and be put out by pharmacists. It'll be available on every street corner inside of a pharmacy, not from some guy in a shady coat." But the state didn't do that and still hasn't done that and just refuses to do that, to step up and take this issue on. So they forced it back to all the counties and the counties have taken what steps they believe are necessary to protect their citizens and that's what this is. This is a step to protect our citizens. And I can go along with a couple of three plants outside. I cannot go along with 10 or 12 outside in a rural, in a residential area. But, you know, that's something we can talk about right now and if you wanna change that outside requirement and everybody agrees on it, that's fine. But I don't think that it belongs in residential areas, period, you know. I think if there's a collective in your city or your town that you can go to and get your medicine, that's what's required, you know, but that's my opinion. I'll get off this soapbox.
Well, then we need to revise the... What they're saying in the draft regulations and just eliminate the first one, period, which is indoor cultivation. If you don't wanna have any in a residential area, then you have to eliminate that.
That would work for me, but I don't know.
It'd work for me, too.
I don't know what you guys want.
I'm not... I still don't like the idea of even having a couple of plants outside in a residential area. It just seems that the number doesn't really, you know, one or two plants impacts the neighbors the same way that five or six. It's still something somebody's gonna wanna take, still something that...
I'm just saying, this is supposed to be for medical marijuana for yourself. And three should be plenty. Because in that, I understand that we should allow them to grow free. And I'd rather see them grow it outdoors than grow it indoors and all these people come in and they're not growing it for themselves, they're growing it to sell and they're doing it in residential law. So let's just eliminate all that.
Yeah, I would like to see an expansion of what Olga brought, more, you know, looking at having dispensaries, you know, writing a separate ordinance for handling dispensaries as a way to provide that to people that live in an area where they can't grow, because it does need to be addressed, that they need to have access. But I think that would do that.
So that should be one of our...
So we can eliminate indoor growing.
Congratulations to the board.
The local stuff altogether and just move it into...
I can't interrupt you.
No, you can't. I have a good, may I ask a question? Probably of sheriff or the council. My question is, or maybe you, Rick, are the better person to answer this, but my question is, how often do we have a problem, a nuisance problem with neighbors, related to the growth of one or two or three plants in the backyard?
We don't see or hear of one or two or three plants in the backyard. It's always six or more. You have a, you know, you've got the second largest subdivision homeowners association that sent a letter to the board and I think it's in your packet. There are two other, the first and third largest subdivisions, homeowners associations are also in the process of writing letters that will go to the board. They want it out of their communities. And the reason is those nuisance issues. It's the public safety. It's the chemical impact and you have a concentrated area, so let's say it's even three plants. And you just look at this area, this big on the map that has 12 lots and half of them have three plants. You've got, you know, you've got an odor issue. You've got a concern that starts impacting the folks there that are less tolerant to that odor. And it's still...
No, I guess the concern I have is we're going into people's homes and telling them that they can't grow a plant in their house. And that concerns me. That, to me, is a concern and I'm trying to find some way to perhaps get a little bit of a compromise here along the lines of what I think Mr. Schu is trying to do, that we strike some balance here. However, if we can get a dispensary ordinance passed and we can get the access issue addressed and because like what I heard here today, which, you know, is it everybody in this room or I think everybody in this room or this spoke gets that the big grows need to go away. They seem to appreciate that we don't wanna negatively impact our environment. They certainly seem to appreciate that we need to protect our children. So that's not the issue with, to me, with this ordinance. The issue with this ordinance is I don't need to comply with the spirit of the law in some balanced way that you guys can enforce. You know, you have more than two or three plants growing. I live in a neighborhood where I had, I know I had a neighbor that had a couple, two or three plants growing. I only know that because it seems that they can't say, "Go talk." But I didn't notice anything from it other than I could see it and I was a little concerned about the prime element. It's common sometimes with that. I certainly don't discount anybody's concern about odor issues at all. I wouldn't wanna be in that position, but by the same token, one or two or three plants, if that is feasible, if that helps us get through this, it seems like a better option to tell people they can't throw anything inside their homes. That's just, that's not me, correct me, and it doesn't seem legally right to me as I think about it.
Well, how do they get rid of the odor when they're growing inside?
Filters.
Filter it.
So you don't smell it outside?
Carbon filters.
And it all costs money.
The indoor requirements included a filtration system in the draft ordinance as we see it. So I believe that the limitation to the 100 square feet and the 1,200 watts and then having to comply with all electrical and other building codes was the attempt to allow small amounts of indoor cultivation that also burned down the house, so.
That provision in the ordinance is consistent with dozens upon dozens of other ordinances throughout the state. Maybe, you know, 50 or more ordinances. We see that as common language in a bunch of city ordinances. It's in a number of county ordinances. And it's for health and safety reasons. I mean, right now, we're not putting any indoor limit. For health and safety reason, you wanna set it to some amount. Everybody seems to consistently be going with the 100 square feet, 1,200 square blocks of lighting. And what we're saying in this proposed ordinance is...
And chemical issues.
Yeah, put it in the garage or build a small 100 square foot shed in the backyard, which you do not need a building permit for. You can build a 200 square foot garage in Lake County without a building permit, just a zoning clearance. And, you know, if they're providing electric, then you need an electrical permit. So, okay, you get an electrical permit, build a small shed. That meets the provisions as outlined in the definition in this ordinance. It's a substantial structure. It's not like a greenhouse that somebody can see through or just tear through. And that is one of the alternatives that we're looking at for the less than acre or acre or less properties in town. Because it conceals it, it deals with the odor. Of course, it's not as affordable as growing outdoors, but at some point, where do you balance the needs of the non growers versus the growers?
So your ordinance calls for a county permitted filtration system and ventilation system. And is there any way to deny those records to the DEA if they want?
DEA would be interested in something like that at all.
Well, I would take an amendment to a county where they had a permitting process through the sheriff's department.
Yeah, but they were running, it was a, it was a lot of issues concerning the amendment. Look at their tag program, their tick-tock program as well. None of them are, have anything to do with what's going on here. To think that the DEA would be concerned about a 10 by 10 foot indoor grow, that is not gonna happen. I mean, I have taken cases of DEA that were substantial amounts, plants like four or 500 and without other aggravated circumstances like firearms involved or felonies involved or previous convictions for marijuana or other drug-related crimes, the United States attorney will just not look at those cases because they have so many that do involve, you know, in some cases, like Milltown recently had, we took out a grower's 52, 53,000 plants. So when you're looking, you know, at those dimensions, they have, like, we have certain amount of resources available to throw at this problem and I can guarantee that they would not be concerned with that. Or would they be looking for names unless they had some other reason? You know, the person was wanted for some other reason or was involved in some other type of crime. Maybe, you know, methamphetamine and he just happened to have minimal marijuana and maybe. But in my mind, I can't see any circumstance that would trigger a DEA inquiry or anything that's in that ordinance. And I agree that that ordinance is back, based on my readings, very similar, same thing, that the more that a county comes in and regulates this thing, because California has not. So in California, as I said, the problem, other states, they have regulated and implemented very tight regulations. And the federal government said, "Well, under those circumstances, we'll allow that to be a state issue." So I think that the regulation actually does work to protect the legitimate medical marijuana patient and grower, you know, the grower himself.
But the feds could still do whatever they want.
Yeah.
The feds could always do what they want.
They could always do what they want, but, you know, I have not found them being unreasonable. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things out there. You know, there's the amendment, you have the separation and the economy and states etc. I understand all that, but the bottom line is, in my own personal experience, and I have a fair bit of it, is I have cross-stematised three or two, seven, maybe a third, as DEA also, so they can do federal cases. In my experience, they are quite conservative when it comes to exercising or flexing their muscles on local jurisdictions. They generally do not want to get involved unless there are any circumstances like firearms or, you know, other things that would trigger their interest.
I hope that would be the case.
Yes, that's my experience and I tell you, I'm very watchful of that. We do maintain our autonomy while taking their assistance for the same time. And they've allowed me to make a lot of calls, you know, if I don't wanna do something, there's respect for that.
I'm not sure that's always the case. I'm, you know, I just read newspapers.
I would read newspapers a long time ago because you could get whatever information you desire under different slants. It's like a smorgasbord. You know, if you want the conservative point of view, you can go get that. If you want the liberal point of view, go get that. It's difficult to get the real information, say, in age. If it's not, it's somehow dated by some type of...
Back to the indoor cultivation. We have the one letter from the clearly previous, you said we got a couple more.
Do you do louder?
Homeowners associations that are writing letters. If you take the 10 square feet and the 1,200 watts, some guy comes and rents a house, who tells you what they're gonna do in that house? How do you get the information to where you can apply the rule?
It's based on complaints or information from the sheriff's office. They might rule somebody up who rats out some grower who, you know, I got this from the guy up the street that's got three bedrooms for. We don't go, this ordinance is not being proposed this way so that law enforcement can go right search warrants up and down neighborhoods and knock on doors and bust in and go deal with indoor. It needs to, we do, Lake County does need to set a limit on indoor because there is none right now. And at least if you have a regulation in place and you get in these situations where, oh, man, it's not just the electrical problem, it's, man, you got, you know, 500, 600 square feet of it in here in this neighborhood and that's not allowed, you know, and yeah, you got your recommendation where you're part of a collective or whatever's going on, but it's just, it's unsafe and that's what we're trying to get at. Understanding we're only gonna be in a reactory mode on those indoors.
Would it be better because you had concerns of fire and such, you know, people's safety? What if the outdoor, but indoor grow had to be an ancillary building outside a small shed? Like, if we had dedicated space, it would be away from kids and people?
I was trying not to be more restrictive than I had to be. I just think that together, but there are other jurisdictions that have done that. And I think Dunsborough, City of Dunsborough does that. I worked at that ordinance last year where it has to be an outdoor. You know, there's different ways to deal with that. The safety issue is... is contain the amount, so we're not burning down houses. I mean, the stuff we've been seeing is crazy. Lakeport, City of Lakeport, 100 square, oh, Lakeport, okay, I love this one, I mean, City of Lakeport's ordinance requires it to be an accessory building.
And there are several cities that don't allow adjacent to a living space, so by initiative, it would have to be now, building. So there are different ways to go, but.
Safety standpoint, it seems like a pretty good idea.
So I just have a couple of questions here. In the draft, or the ordinance, the proposed ordinance itself, under 72.5 feet or top notch outdoor cultivation, empty garage shall not be located within 50 feet of the stream, potter bank, or the creek, etc. What are the requirements for other types of agricultural and poll tax growing?
It varies. Most of those, you know, organic agricultural operation goes through an environmental analysis first to, to, to curate the vegetation that we put in, in the first place. So it becomes very site specific with the environmental concerns on that site, the type of slope, the type of activity.
50 feet is a minimum.
50 feet is a minimum. I put what, what I felt needed to be the minimum.
That's probably to me, I. That's understatement why I say it's probably too hypothetical. Is there, someone I had a question, I'm trying to understand, but somebody, and I've forgotten who it was in testimony, talked about limitations where the limit was six, six mature, 12 mature plants on parcel to a year larger than an acre, and that 72.5 C M for outdoor cultivation. And trying to understand this, the question I have is, as to where these acreages are located, if you're out in a, if you're not in a residential area, but you're, you're out in maybe rural residential, where houses are not close together, but you didn't have a full acre, but you weren't in an area where you're going to impact anybody, why, why, why does it matter? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Subdivisions like Up and Ham don't run outdoor in their neighborhood. There are other subdivisions.
I'm not talking about subdivisions, I wanted to, yeah.
Well, most of them are, when we get into this market, they're almost all subdivisions. It looks, it looks like, for the island, I think, you know, all over the county, Parable Estates, you know, those are all acre, half acre, half acre, eight, nine, half. And, you know, so you have these concentrations of residents, and in most cases, that's what we're dealing with. A cop, you know, you get half acre, maybe a lot, a lot of that area. And so, and not all of them are developed. So in a lot of cases, you have great distances between those properties and the next developed property, but in a lot of cases, you don't. And from a land use standpoint, it's incredibly difficult. You can't, there's no easy way to pick and choose that.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
All right, so how are we going to go through this? What needs to be agreed upon that's different from what we have in front of us?
Could we see if we have agreement on the indoor, outdoor, and should put on the table?
As far as?
As far as whether we would want to have that modification made in the.
Outdoors, anywhere.
Do you know who's talking about?
That would be the second one. I'm just saying that to stop all of this indoor stuff, maybe we could allow 10 square feet of the outdoor with a maximum of three plants. That can stop. No, I know that.
None of this is going to stop anything. Do you know where he is on the.
I'm not sure what section.
Page three.
Of the ordinance itself?
No, of the memo.
Oh, the document.
Is it one acre or?
Yes, prohibited outdoor cultivation with any designated community ground boundaries, and on any parcel that is one acre or smaller. Change that to where they, maybe they could take that 10 square feet, which is.
100 square.
Or allowing.
100, 100 square feet, 10 by 10.
10 by 10, which we're allowing in indoor, and also allow that on the outdoor with a maximum of three plants.
I just think that with the concentration of areas like that, you know, like we were talking, you have three neighbors growing three plants, and you have the same problem that neighbors.
Well, just like the very first, I'm not even going to help the indoor either, always people are complaining from the Riviera. That's not going to change that, eh? You said it yourself, you know, you got to get a complaint when it sells. Right?
Right.
Okay.
And people are complaining, and that homeowners association has been very active recently.
Let me tell you, the Riviera homeowners association doesn't.
Well, I like this guy.
My son is there, he did.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, they filed complaints, they wrote a letter, they're concerned about it. Two other major subdivisions in the county are also doing the same thing, they don't want outdoor, so they're going to file a complaint. And if, if somebody's growing whatever, if you say zero outdoor, if you say three outdoor, if they go over and we get a complaint, this ordinance is designed to enforce that. Is it not possible for them to address that in their CC and R?
It's not possible.
Well, isn't anything forward, has, for me, with my thinking on this, it has to include a provision to bring back the.
Disagreements.
But I'm still really concerned about the way we did this public testimony. When we've done, we've looked at ordinances in the past, people had time, and understand that there was access a week in advance to the ordinance, people had time to actually come forward with pretty good specifics on a section by section basis. And while I'm trying to read what they were going forward with, they did that, they did that for us, and it was illuminating. Illuminating to me, I don't, I will admit, I don't understand marijuana very well. But I pretty much understand impact to public safety, property, children, I understand all that. It was very helpful to get that input, and we didn't get that kind of info today. And, I mean, I don't think anybody came up and actually went through the ordinance and made specific recommendations. There were a couple of general recommendations made that it's not working, and we didn't why. And that just concerns me that we don't, we didn't have the benefit of that type of more focused discussion on the ordinance. And let me just explain why, because what we did have was a lot of emotional testimony about the benefits of marijuana. And that wasn't really what we were here to do. So I just, I just have to say that that's, that's concerned to me. And I don't know if there's anything you can do about it now. We don't have the luxury of much time, because things are going to expire. And you guys, you all enforcement, you're dealing with, these are real time problems you're dealing with. But I want to go on the record saying that I, I find that to be problematic. I don't think we should, I don't think we should do this.
I'll also say that in regards to that, I was able to go online and look at the PDF file, and I could have saved it, or printed it, or done anything with it. It was out there, I knew it was out there. This has been public, the information, and when the story came out and was talking directly about this, you know, it was available, it was available for people to find on the county website, on Lake, Lake County News. I'm not sure, I'm not sure about the record B, whether they had it on any of their sites, but, you know, it's, it's been out there, it's, it was readily available, so.
One week is not enough time for 25 page.
The minimum of the last five days.
The legal notice requirement on this was only 10 days, it would accomplish 12 days.
No, I just want to, I just want to say, I know, I get that we met some legal requirements. I'm saying something a little bit different. I'm saying that when you have issues that are obviously as important, and as we know controversial, as an issue like this, I just think we should, we should be taking the time and giving people the time.
Because the beauty of this process, this two step process for an ordinance to be adopted is you're the preliminary review authority, and that helps start the public discourse on it. And all of this information is captured through the meeting minutes, the teams, it gets shared and presented with the board supervisors. Plus, everybody has another month, so it's time this goes to the board supervisors, who has another 30 days to review it, formulate their own thoughts about maybe how it should be amended, and present it to the board supervisors before they ever take a final action.
Yeah. One other thing I'd like to add, too, is that, in the case of Mr. Green, he's not here right now, and so I, I'm just going to speculate. I know that he had the information, that he had the, the item, and he didn't attack it outrightly, he only attacked it on, on the issue of CEQA. He did not go after the ordinance.
Do you mean Mr. Robey?
No, no, Mr. Green.
Roy Green.
Roy Green. He, I mean, he's an attorney, and he didn't go after the ordinance. If, if that's not telling about how the ordinance is written, then I, I don't know what else to say. I mean, it's.
That's not here to be.
Yeah, oh, okay, all right. But he didn't, he didn't go right down and, and say, well, this is illegal, this is illegal.
It's a joke.
All right.
Yes, he did. Yes, he did.
I come from outside.
You're welcome to watch the video.
Okay, all right.
Ridiculous.
All right, thank you.
Lost camera.
All right, so what's, what's the pleasure of this body today?
I don't think you're going to reach a consensus, obviously. So I think you, you probably ought to make the motion, we'll drop it with the supervisors then.
It's going to the supervisors anyway, so.
Well, at a minimum, at a minimum.
Well, that's going to be a recommendation.
Yeah. I understand, but there's definitely legal requirements for noticing, and I also understand the process that we go for, we go to the board supervisors, give people time, etc., etc. Is there, is anybody here at the table willing to allow another two weeks review and come back to this?
I don't think it's changed much. I've gone independently before I realized you had that nice little diagram for me. I actually found a website, a cannabis website, they gave all the county regulations that were posted, I like to throw ours right in there with everybody else. It's really, pretty much boilerplate, taken from other counties to have these regulations in place for some amount of time.
There's a follow up.
So I, I think what I'm hearing is, we want to make sure that the board supervisors knows that we recommend highly that they look at the dispensary ordinance again.
How about the.
And that we feel that's part of, we feel that's part of this working, is to have dispensaries available to the community.
I don't buy them.
And then, I'll wait for a motion from somebody on what you want to do.
Are you intending to add that, that language to the actual recommendation?
I.
The dispensary ordinance to mean?
I think it can be done as a separate item, I don't think it needs to go along with this ordinance.
No, I just meant that in the, the language of the, the recommendation, we're going to back in the actual, actual recommendation.
We would like, I'd like to add another point, that the recommendation to the board supervisor on dispensary be included in the discussion.
Thanks, Trudy, for the language. We are recommending that they bring back the dispensary ordinance.
Some, whatever version they end up with, you know, not, it may not be exactly what they have.
I'm sure we modified, but, okay, I'm fine.
And were you okay with the indoor grow written, then, or did you want to talk to the chancellor or something like that?
Is it the way it is?
Three plants.
What about the input of the stakeholders?
I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission find this zoning ordinance text amendment AM 13 dash 01 is exempt from CEQA guidelines pursuant to 15061B, sub B, sub 3, with the findings listed in the memo dated November 1st, 2013. I need a second.
Okay.
Okay, I have a second. Discussion.
Discussion. I would like to suggest that we do modify the 50 feet setback from streams and creeks. Would you go with me on that? 50 feet is not far enough. So you said that was a minimum requirement. So can we, can we?
If you're pushing out a recommendation on that, you wanted to fall to 100 feet on that?
Yes.
That's fine.
If there's consensus there, that's, we'll add that for the ones.
So is, as, what changes is. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Aye, all of us. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed zoning ordinance text as modified today with respect to the slope analysis, slope, sorry, it's setback from the.
Back London.
Or creeks or water. Sixth Amendment, AM 13 dash 01, applied for by the county of Lake for reasons listed in the memo dated November 1st, 2013. Need a second?
I guess.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Was that one? Did you say no? Okay. So it's 4-1. All right. With that I've done, is there any office news?